Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, October 16th, 2017. The first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that as well.
I'll also vote affirmative, and that's unanimous. Next is the approval of the October 2nd meeting. Minutes, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold off on the minutes of the executive session, but I'd be happy to approve the minutes of the regular session of October 2nd. Make that motion.
I would second that as well.
Also vote affirmative, and that's unanimous. The next agenda item is public hearing and scheduled appointments. Chris, if you want to come up. It's 99 Restaurant, change of manager. All right, tonight's public hearing is regarding change of manager for the restaurant 99 here in Milford. All right, all the paperwork seems to be in order. Chris, if you just want to introduce yourself to the community, I know that you have a number of years in the restaurant experience, both between the Olive Garden and 99 Restaurant.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. Yes, been with the restaurant business for quite some time. I managed the Olive Garden for about six years, been with the 99 Restaurant for a few years. Love the restaurant industry, so if you guys ever around, stop by at the Milford 99, most likely I'll be there.
Are there any questions from the board?
No questions.
This is just a change of manager, so I'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve change of manager for 99 Restaurant. I would second that.
I'll also vote affirmative. That's unanimous. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks, Chris. Next agenda item is the benefits coordinator, Kelly Capice, on a recommendation of senior insurance plans.
Does that include Bill and I, or?
Well, it's one thing I get to escape from for a few more years. You guys aren't there yet.
No, that's a good story. I'd stick with that.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, good evening. Hi. I have nothing to have you sign tonight, so that's...
Okay, they'll have cram.
Bill's got plenty of signings.
With me is Brian Boyle, Jr., our health consultant, health insurance consultant.
Nice to see you, too.
So basically, I'm just looking for a vote from the board tonight to accept the rates for the 2018 insurance plans for the Medicare eligible senior plans.
And it looks like the monthly rate for the Blue Cross Blue Shield is actually going down?
Yes, by 11 cents.
By 11 cents? Oh, yeah, at least it's still in the right direction.
Right direction, yeah.
Yes.
And the Tufts Medicare Preferred HMO is going up by $18 a month.
Correct.
Which is about 5.85 percent. Okay. I mean, it seems... You guys do always do your due diligence, so this is where we're at. Bill or Mike, any questions?
I don't have any questions. It's all laid out in the memo. I just want to make sure if there's anything that you want to communicate that was unique this year, that you wanted to talk about, or if it's...
The only thing that I would mention is the attachment of the changes to the Blue Cross Medex formulary list. That is a plan-wide change that they're making to help reduce costs on the prescription drug plans, and that's part of that process, was why we had the reduction in price this year.
Yeah, and Blue Cross was really proactive about setting up a meeting with Kelly and me to kind of explain the rationale for the change in the formulary. They were really trying to be proactive this year, because as you all know, prescription drug costs are crazy from year to year. So they made these changes, thinking that if they tweaked the formulary in a way that wouldn't necessarily disrupt all the members, they could keep the premium for that portion of the plan at a level fund. So that's what they were able to do this year. We'll see how it turns out.
All the currently enrolled members are going to get a copy of this list before January 1st, so they'd know if they had any impact, and they can, you know, have a discussion with their doctor if need be, or at least be aware of it.
Great. Like, any questions?
Not that it makes a difference, just a question. How many people are on Blue Cross Blue Shield in town, and how many people are on?
Approximately 400 on the Medex Plan, and I believe about 70 on the Tufts.
65.
65, 70 on the Tufts Medicare Preferred.
So everybody leans more towards Blue Cross?
Yeah, the Tufts Medicare Preferred is a Medicare Advantage Plan, and it's network-driven. The Blue Cross Medex Plan is a nationwide accepted plan, and it's run different, it's a Medicare supplement.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point. It's not often... We haven't, don't get Kelly in front of us that often. And, you know, I've got to say, I have to apologize, because when I'm in the building, it's a lot of times on weekends, so folks aren't here, it's not during regular hours. But I just want to say that I continue to hear great things about the help that you're providing people, retirement planning and benefits planning. I know you just met with the water companies, the water company, to explain what our benefits package looks like, and I just want to say, great work. We don't get the opportunity, it's not necessarily directly related to this, although it is in a way, just, I just want to give you some feedback. A lot of times we'll hear feedback that's not always positive, but I continue to hear only positive things about you.
Oh, that's good, thank you.
Well, you earned that, so I just wanted to...
I thought the water company meeting went very well. I thought it was a good, you know, dialogue.
Nice job, and on behalf of our employees, we're grateful that you're there in this role.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, Bill. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move.
Second.
And I'll also vote affirmative, and that's unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, I think we're going to reschedule, Rick, I believe. I think Mr. Mack is waiting on Verizon, or something like that, even though I had asked him to come in. Did you talk to him?
I can kind of fill you in a little bit on Verizon, if the board wishes. Actually, I, Mr. Mack obviously is looking to get the flags and has raised the money. At that point, the gentleman he was talking to was exactly the same guy I am talking to with Verizon. So we have reached the stage where we have provided the first form, which is just information on contacts and what have you. The second form is an agreement with the town, so we've kind of taken care of that one. We're now at the third step and final step, which is to actually survey the polls where the flags will be located. So that's where I am right now. I have reached out to the fire chief, and he's graciously going to assist us in doing the survey, and also hopefully, if we get that far, putting the flags up. So I have kind of taken over for Mr. Mack at that point.
Okay, great.
Figuring he's done a great deal of work himself, and the agreement has to be signed by the town in any event, so... And again, the gentleman he spoke with is the gentleman I'm speaking with, too. So we are up to date, we're moving as quickly as we can to try to get this before the board.
Okay. No, that's great. At just some point, I would like to have Mr. Mack here, so that we can publicly acknowledge him.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. But I just want the board to know that it is progressing, and we're doing what we can as quickly as we can.
No, and I've been aware of that, and I appreciate you doing that, especially for the folks at home. So this is a, this is just a really positive, nice thing for the community that he's kind of taken on himself, so I just want to make sure that we get him in here at some point, so that we can, you know, thank him and acknowledge him, and let people know that, you know, this was a concept that he came up with. Bill or Mike, any comment or question?
No, I'm good. I'm good. No, I just want to thank Rick. I know it was Mr. Mack's initiative, but I know Rick's helping and doing everything he can, so thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next agenda item is Maya's Motors regarding a Class II license.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we had him scheduled at 7:30, you're kind of moving quickly here.
Well, we'll come back to it.
If we could come back to it.
I didn't know if they were, okay.
Yeah, I don't see anybody from Maya Motor.
Okay, well, we can certainly come back to it.
Here, yeah.
All right, we can go to the Town Administrator's Report?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, just that, you know, I want to make it as fast as possible, and while you've got momentum. This was a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve it in its existing, its continued and existing use. We received feedback that this has been acted upon favorable, and I'm prepared to make a motion to approve. I don't have any questions. If the other board members have questions, we can wait.
The only, if I may excuse me, is that there is the need for the site plan review, so I would last the motion be subject to that, or contingent to that, yes.
Okay.
And then I would have no problem with the motion.
Yeah, I just, while you've got the momentum, Mr. Chairman, if that works for you, or do you want to wait?
No, absolutely, and this is obviously, I mean, this is Mark's, all these are people that have been doing business for, you know, many, many years together, and are trusted, so...
I would second that.
And I'll also vote affirmative.
Affirmative to contingent on the site plan review.
Correct, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Now on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, three items tonight, Mr. Chairman, just again to update the board on the issue with the town hall gas main. EverSource is supposed to be here this week, so that should be taken care of. They will be including bollards to protect the main. We have completed repairs to the brick portion of the building, as well as the replacement of the tiles inside the building. They were done last weekend, over the weekend. We do have a plumber ready to go to do the plumbing repairs once EverSource replaces the gas main. That has to be done prior to the plumber coming in to do his work. So I'm hoping by the middle to end of next week that this will be taken care of. The only remaining issue would be, do we want to put additional bollards? And the answer is yes. I have already looked into that. We may want to put two bollards in front of, if you recall, the area in front of the fencing, which you know is right there on the street. So it is progressing, and I just wanted to update the board on that. The second item is, I want to just update the board on something that we've been working on for a couple of months now. It's a print management system. IT Manager Andrew Diorio, Finance Director Zach Taylor, and myself have been meeting with printer, copier companies to review proposals for a print management system. We're looking to increase efficiency and consolidate single-purpose devices to lower costs over time. In addition, the new printer software that's now available will result in increased security, and will allow the tracking of each print job to each department and each department employee. We're hoping to have this system include town hall, youth center, senior center, highway department, and we're also looking to hopefully include the library, as I've had contact with Sue Edmonds. We hope to be bringing a proposal to this board for your review and approval, and answer any questions you might have in the near future. So Andy's been working very hard on that. And then one final item, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we are working on an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. We have met and had a kickoff meeting with representatives from the Commission on Disability, the school, and the Parks Department. We will be hopefully putting together an ADA plan that will include the schools, town buildings, and recreation areas. We will be receiving a proposal from a consultant, which we will then bring to this board, obviously for your review and approval, and to answer any questions you might have, but I just want the board to know that this is also progressing. So there are two things that we hope to bring to your attention in the next month or so for your review and comment and approval. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, that's a lot. Any questions or comments, Bill?
No, a lot happening, and Rick, once again, thank you.
Thank you. And Mike?
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thank you, Rick, good job. Next, under Old Business, is for the special town meeting review of articles.
Mr. Chairman, I've, you know, we've all had an opportunity to look at these, and these have been in discussion for quite a while. I'm just going to make a blanket motion, and if the board members are so inclined, they can support that. I'm going to make a recommendation that we approve the various articles presented by the Board of Selectmen. With exception to 19, I think we're going to pass that over, and look to our annual budget for laptop. Just a matter of timing. We came out with that late, and if the board members are okay with passing over until April...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, and I think there's also opportunity to look at those costs and refine them a little bit.
Yeah. No, and I do want to, just with that article, at least say, thank you, Rick, because I know Rick and I were, had chatted, and he was under the gun, so we put it on the warrant. And Rick, I appreciate that, but I certainly have no problem passing over. There's been, you know, a lot of conversation about that.
As much as I would like to say no, because I have a stack in my bedroom this high.
I agree with you, Mike. It's just timing, and discussions within com, and...
We can go viral at some point.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, no, I look forward to that.
So I'm okay.
Is that your motion, Bill, or?
To approve, to approve, and, you know, voice our support for the various articles of Board of Selectmen, with exception of 19, and recommend pass over, yes.
And I would second that.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. And if I can, I just wanted to maybe either have a discussion, or just say a few words about Article 6, which is the purchase, acquire, demolition of property on Central Street. I just want to let the public know that this is just another one of those, I think, you know, quality of life issues that were, that were, that this board has been talking about for some time. We, you know, they're all concurrent properties, and I think this is an opportunity to purchase some property that we could use for either additional open space or parking in the future, as we're trying to attract more businesses to the downtown area. And I just think that, you know, there isn't an opportunity that comes along like this very often, and I certainly hope that town meeting can support that. Bill, Mike, any additional comments? I mean, it's just, it's something that I certainly haven't experienced, being on the board over the last three years. This is an article that's somewhat different to me in opportunity, so that's why I just wanted to say a few words.
You know, it's consistent with the strategy you set forth at the beginning of this year. It's consistent with what previous boards have talked about, but not necessarily accomplished. And it's consistent with what a resident of the community and business leader of this community brought to the attention of the board, that there may be opportunity on Central Street. And when we look at contiguous properties that frankly boarded up, this may be the opportunity that you get in the right cycle at the right time, the right real estate market to move on. And I think I would agree with you, you know, I think it's the time to go get those properties.
Great, thank you, Bill.
And I would agree with everything the Selectmen Buckley just said, and I think also, we can't lose sight of this, the safety situation. Some of those buildings are falling down, and we owe it to our residents to make sure that they're safe. We need to take them down and continue to improve the town of Milford, and I think that's exactly what this is about, is we're going to make a change, and we're going to improve, and then we're going to continue with the safety and concern of our taxpayers in the town of Milford.
Agreed.
That's great. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Bill. The next agenda item is Attorney Petnari. Were you here for the Class II license?
I was, yes.
You were. Well, I don't know if you want to come up for a second. We went past, we were ahead of schedule, but I just wanted to let you know, because you're representing such a respected family that's been in business for so long, we actually voted unanimous to support.
Well, thank you. I wouldn't have put the tie on.
Along with site plan approval.
There is still a need for site plan.
Correct.
Okay.
And I will call you tomorrow, because I need to book the rooms for those hearings.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Good night, now. Have a good night. The next agenda item is the RFP for the sale of the former Middle School East. And I think we've had, we certainly have had this for a number of, a number of months now, and it's been revised and revised, and I think it's great that we have kept making changes at it, and looking at it through the last, over the last couple of months, tightening up as much as we could. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, to see if we're ready to move forward and take the next step.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request for proposal, its current revision, and for lack of a better date, the one presented to us on 10/16. I think we've had an opportunity to make changes. We've been talking about a lot of different opportunities that exist there, and I'm pleased to make that motion.
And I would agree with that, and, you know, just, I want to talk a little bit about is, one of the things that, you know, all three of us being school committee, former school committee members, current school committee members, is that everybody talks about the gym. I think with the renovation of the youth center, and that new beautiful gym that we have at the youth center, you know what, we've got, in my opinion, you can never have enough gym space, but we got a brand-new, beautiful gym. It's time for us to, you know, cut the cord and let this go and sell it off, and let somebody develop it.
Yeah, I think even with the divider, they're going to, they're refining, the youth center is refining how they, how they use the gym, and how to more efficiently use the gym, and with the divider, I'm convinced that, you know, just like at our elementary schools, and some of the other schools, where you can coordinate off and even get greater use, I think they've, they've done a good job at looking at that, so I agree with you, Mike.
Yeah, and I think also for the general public, I've had the opportunity to go inside Middle School East since it's been closed, and any, any conversation that you might have about rehabbing it, it's over the edge. That's the best way to put it.
Yeah, yes.
You know, let's, let's give it to somebody else to rehab, not the town of Milford.
Okay.
All right, so I would second that.
No, and I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Thank you. Next agenda item are the appointment of water commissioners. First of all, is the pleasure of the board to, you gentlemen both comfortable moving on and making appointments? We said that this was on our, I certainly hope so, that this was on our timetable and our, you know, our self-set deadlines to get these, these water commissioners appointed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, out of respect, I'd like to go first, not out of disrespect for Selectmen Buckley, I'd like to nominate Phil Samicoli as a, to be an individual to the water commissioners. And my reasons for that are, Phil is been a longtime, very dedicated member of the Finance Committee. I know that he was also actively one of the auditors, you know, in the water company, for the water company. People that don't know him on a personal level, he's very, very involved with Milford Hospital. He is the president of driver of medical. And I think that, I don't think I know, I know for a fact that Phil will bring to the water company, to the water commissioners, accountability from a financial aspect, and I think we've all talked about this, is that I think the water commissioner's role is going to be key, and I think that one of the key positions that we need with a water commission, with the water commission, is we need an accounting background, a financial background, somebody that understands that. So not to, you know, go on and on and on, I would like to nominate Phil Samicoli as the water, first water commissioner in the town of Milford.
Mr. Chairman, I'll gladly second that motion.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the number of applicants we received. We actually made it difficult, we received 11 applications, people that were well-known or well-accomplished in this community, and also in the private sector. So with that, I would like to nominate Jonathan Bruce. He's well-known to this community with 23 years as an appointed member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. He was 15 years as chairman, he was a member of the school committee for six years, five years as a building committee responsible for Brookside renovation, to the early childhood center, the high school, and Stacy Middle School, and also the last four years as Woodland Building Committee, serving as its vice chair, and who's just done an outstanding job along with Aldo in that space, bringing that in under budget and on time. So I would like to nominate Mr. Jonathan Bruce, please.
Is there a second?
Before I second that, I just would like to say, and I am going to second that, and the reason that I am, and I thought long and hard about this, is that, and to Bill's point, the Woodland School project was a, was a big project. There were a lot of obstacles that went on in that project. I can go on from the rocks in the old parking lot, and having to set up the Geiger counter on somebody's front lawn, and, but I have to give Jonathan and Aldo, to Bill's point, I can't forget Aldo, I have to give them both credit, because what's going to happen with the purchase of the water company? There are going to be obstacles. There are going to be big obstacles to overcome, and I think that Jonathan is the person that not only has the time, the time to handle the obstacles, he has the patience to handle the obstacles, and he knows, after, after building a $60 million elementary school, he understands the obstacles, he understands how to work together between, you know, think about it, they had to work together with the construction company, they had to work together with the Board of Selectmen, the building committees, so I want to second Mr. Buckley's recommendation. I think Jonathan Bruce is a, is a perfect, perfect match to serve as the second water commissioner in the town of Milford, and I would second that.
No, and I will certainly vote in favor of that, and make that unanimous, and what I can say about Jonathan is that I served with him many years ago on the Brookside School Building Committee, along with doing some work at Memorial, and he brought a lot to the table, and having the construction background and everything, he certainly knows how to get things done, so I'm very impressed with that, and also vote in favor, so that's unanimous. Now, I would also like to make a nomination. As, Bill, you pointed out, the number of people that applied for this, we're very lucky, town of Milford, to have this talent. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jamie Lucchini as the third water commissioner for the town of Milford. Jamie is the superintendent of the Northbridge Department of Public Works. One of his major responsibilities is he has the oversight of the half-town-owned, half-privately-owned water department. He's also a member of the Burnin Grove Trustees here in Milford, as an elected member, and he has served both the town of Milford Highway Department for over 15 years, and was the union steward for both the Highway Department and the Parks Department, which I think could be very valuable with the water company personnel coming on board, and probably, you know, possibly unionizing in the future, like most of our town employees. So with that said, I certainly would look to support Jamie Lucchini.
I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And if I might just comment a little bit on that, you know, I spoke earlier how I felt, you know, Phil Samicoli with the accounting background, the financial background, we picked Jonathan with his construction background, with his understanding to be able to work through conflict. I think he does an amazing job. And Will, I can't agree with you more. I think Jamie's the third perfect match. You know, he's, he's, his life has been a municipal employee, so he's going to be able to, he's going to be able to sit there as a, as a water commissioner, and there might be a conflict with employees, he's going to be able to understand that, because he manages municipal employees. So again, I would unanimously, I would second that.
As, as it turns out, he's, it's funny, out of all the applicants, he was the only one that had run a municipal department.
Right. And we need someone there that's going to understand that.
I agree, good choice.
Yeah.
So that's, that's unanimous, and we can welcome Jonathan, Phil Samicoli, Jonathan Bruce, and Jamie Lucchini as the first water commissioners in the town of Milford.
Mr. Chairman?
Does that mean we're no longer water commissioners?
Well, I think it's, I think it's provisional.
Yes, it is provisional. Legislation, I'm told, is at its third reading in the Senate, should be in growth soon, so we're, you're close, you're close to being non-commissioned.
We're getting closer.
So it's close.
Your school, school building, I mean, your school committee, your Board of Selectmen, and you're also a water commissioner.
Yeah, I'm going to have to get a badge.
Yeah, you need a badge. Mr. Chairman, with that, you know, we had the opportunity through the, you know, the names that were presented to us, to look over resumes and to see some highly qualified candidates. And Chris is sitting in the background, Mr. Moore, chairman of the FinCom, and we just took away one of his most senior members. And so what I'd like to do is, I had talked to Brandt Hornberger, who has extensive background in finance, extensive background in business, just incredibly bright individual, talented individual, clearly by his resume. It was not someone that, that may have had all the time for, the water commissioner may have required, but what I'd like to do is make a motion that we put Brandt Hornberger on, appoint Brandt Hornberger as a member of the Finance Committee. I talked to him about that during our conversation, and I had the opportunity to reach out to some of the people, he was one of them, and just an extremely talented individual, and great background for FinCom, and we talked about what those duties were and responsibilities, and he's ready to help his community in any way he can.
Mr. Chairman, am I out of line, just to ask the chairman of the Finance Committee?
Absolutely, he's an excellent candidate, I couldn't say any better things about him.
And I, I second that motion.
All right, well, knowing Brandt, as I do, and his, his wife, who is a lifelong resident of Milford... of Milford, and someone that graduated Milford High School, and actually, I think graduated with Chris, I think I should certainly be happy to vote also affirmatively, and make that unanimous. So congratulations to Brandt as well.
You lost some good talent, you picked up some good talent, so it's good.
Still be missed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
As for the next agenda item, which is the stipend for the water commissioners, I can certainly ask the pleasure of the board, but I would ask that if we can take this and examine it maybe till the, to the next meeting, since we're not under the gun, so to speak, until then, unless there's a problem with that. Bill, is there any reason why we would have to move on this tonight?
I don't see it as time-sensitive. You know, I don't know if FinCom, they need some direction from us, I don't know that it's that impactful to the budget. Okay, so, no, I agree with you, it's not time-sensitive.
Okay.
And I would agree with that. I would feel very comfortable moving on it.
Okay.
Yep.
A move, passing it until our next meeting?
Yes, exactly.
All right, great. I just want to spend a little bit more, more time on that. Okay. Just for some recent thought processes, so. Under old business, any new old business?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask that the town administrator meet with the highway surveyor, and folks from the, from Hope Dale. I would like to see us make some progress on the Mellon Street Bridge, get it in the cycle for repair, get it on the FinCom's radar screen, and I know that'll help us, it'll help certainly the businesses up on Bear Hill. And I know that the last we had heard from Hope Dale, they were ready to move on it, I just don't want to see us lose any traction.
Okay.
I'm good.
I have one item of old business, it's regarding the election working group committee that we formed here, and appointed Brian Cole and Amy Nevs, our town clerk, as the co-chairs of that, of that committee. What I'd like to do, Rick, is to get them scheduled for the next meeting.
Sure.
Amy and Brian, and Brian's in the audience today, have really hit the ground running, and just between corresponding to each other, and quite honestly, keeping, keeping the four of us in the, in the loop. And Amy had some just, had some very good suggestions today about who should initially get together, because there's gonna be a whole lot of stakeholders and decision-makers in that process. So if we can put them on the agenda for the next meeting, if that, you know, works out for Brian and Amy, I'd like to just, again, get together, especially since this is one of our newest committees, and the next election cycle will be here before you know it. So I'd like to, you know, have them share their thoughts on moving forward, so that we get some direction, so that way we're just not appointing folks to the committee and then telling them to go off. I'd like to know what Brian and Amy are thinking, and we can go from there. Is that okay, Brian?
When's the next meeting?
Uh, two weeks from today.
November sixth.
November sixth.
Believe it be. Well, actually, it's three weeks, because we're, we have, we'll schedule a meeting before then, I don't know if you want it to kind of rush it.
No, no, that's great, as long as their schedule works out.
Be November sixth.
I think I can do that.
All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, there's no more old business, moving on to new business, Craft Roots Brewing is looking for an entertainment license for live entertainment for the weekdays and Saturday only from six to ten P.M. They seek to have a small acoustic type of band, solo or duos mostly for weekdays and Saturday nights from six P.M. to ten P.M. All music will be inside the taproom, never outside, no cover charge will ever be charged, and no Sundays.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to move on that, great business, and would like to see them expand, and I'm glad to see that they are doing that, and, you know, hear great things coming back in terms of feedback on their business.
Great.
Would just like to say, I agree with Selectman Buckley, you know, my only regret is that when I go there and I see the vats and everything, I'm like, wow, how come they couldn't put this business downtown with the big glass windows, so the people walking down the sidewalk could see how beautiful it really is. But no, great, 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 you know, company, and I would vote in affirmative to support them in any way.
No, and I can certainly say that Robert and Maureen actually looked downtown prior to anything else for that very reason. We have, just the building size and vacancies didn't exist at the time, but that was what a lot of us had hoped for.
Yeah.
But they're doing great, and it's a phenomenal business, and they're two great ladies.
Yeah, good for them.
I also vote affirmative, and that's unanimous. Next is a letter from Town Council and updated rules from the Attorney General regarding the open meeting law, which is something that we need to adopt formally as the chief executives of the town of Milford. Is everyone comfortable with the law, and not that we have much of an option, this is more of a formality at this point, but they're asking and authorizing to post at alternative places, which is the website, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion to adopt this new bylaw, I don't know that it's, again, optional, but.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in the affirmative, and that's unanimous.
Well, remain legal, how's that?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Stay illegal. Next, the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association and Tri-Valley Runners are looking for a permit to obstruct for, I'm sorry, the date of Sunday, December third, at three fifty P.M. Ten minutes prior to the parade, the runners will start at Industrial Road and Birch Street, and follow the parade route to School Street, take a ride on spruce, and finish at the fire station.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman?
We don't have to run on this, do we? Oh, all right, I second it then.
It's usually, it's usually the newest member that does?
Oh, really?
I had to do it backwards, so.
I also vote.
What if the newest member is the oldest member?
The next agenda item is the Milford Permanent Firefighters Association regarding the annual Santa Parade, which is Sunday, December third, 2017, and they step off at four P.M. from Veterans Memorial Drive and the Big Y Supermarket.
Big hit with kids, big hit with families, it's always great to see the firefighters out there and supporting this. I'd move to approve.
No, Brian, it was the best, best time of the year.
I also vote affirmative, and make that unanimous.
Yep.
They'll be excited tonight.
And Scotty.
Yeah, exactly. Next, the Veterans Department is looking for a parade permit for Friday, November tenth. We'll assemble at Stop &amp; Shop parking lot at nine thirty, step off at ten, and proceed up East Main Street to Calzone Park, and then continue to the Draper War Memorial.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to move to approve.
I would second that as well.
I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
And Rick, if you could let John know, in past years, I've been able to take that day off from work, our company doesn't observe Veterans Day, but I'm not gonna be able to make it due to a work commitment.
Okay.
And that's too bad.
Next agenda item is the Veterans Day Ceremony regarding the Medal of Liberty presentation. We received a memo to Rick Vilani from John Pillar, our Veterans Agent, and I'm just gonna read this. "I would appreciate if you would present to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration, the following program being presented by the Citizens for Milford." The following in their text, "As we discuss, Citizens for Milford have arranged another Veterans Day ceremony following this year's parade. In addition, there will be an awarding of eight Medals of Liberty to the next of kin of the following killed-in-action Milford soldiers. Rudolph J. Fino, First World War II Killed-in-Action. Jerry Lanzetta, World War II. Edward Bagnoli, World War II. Edward Anatelli, World War II. David M. St. John, Vietnam. Eugene F. Cormier, Vietnam. Robert J. Gritty, Vietnam. And Aliyah P. Fontecchio, Iraqi Freedom. He was the last Milford KIA. The Medal of Liberty was proclaimed in 2009 for Massachusetts' next-of-kin servicemen and women from the Commonwealth Killed-in-Action or who died as a result of wounds received in action. Several months ago, a Milford Medal of Liberty Committee was created, that includes myself, Peter Scandoni, Mattie Venziano, Seaman U.S. Navy and Vietnam Veteran, Vinnie Savarazzi?
Savazari.
Savazari. Major U.S. Army Retired, and Joanne D. Maria Morgan. My colleagues devoted a lot of time researching records, searching out next-of-kin, and applying for the Medals of Proclamations. In the event of inclement weather, the above ceremony will be held at the Italian-American Vets Hall at ten A.M. November tenth. Thank you, Peter Scandoni."
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, you know, if this doesn't bring us back to Mr. Max Initiative wanting to line up a parade route with American flags, nothing does. I think it's a great event, it should get our full support, and if there's anything they need from this board, for the purposes of a motion, I'd make a motion to approve, I think that's a formality. But, yeah, this makes sense, Milford honors its veterans, and I'd like to, you know, thank John Pillar and the committee that worked so hard to get these Medals of Liberty to the next of kin and have that award ceremony.
And I would second that, and if I could just, you know, just add to that, is that this is the ultimate sacrifice. This is what, we sit here tonight, and we're safe, and we have our freedom, and these are the people that gave the ultimate sacrifice to make sure that we're, we're safe, and we live in the greatest nation in the world. So, again, I would second that.
Well said, Mike, and I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Next is a permit to obstruct for the Milford VFW Post 1544 for the distribution of poppies, and this will be held on November third to November ninth, 2017, from eight A.M. to four P.M. They'll be at Stop &amp; Shop, Tedeschi's, and Olivas.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second that.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Next agenda item is from the Milford Industrial Commission regarding a study where they've contracted with Beals and Thomas. I know we've spent a lot of time, especially you, Bill, during your, during your few, your years here, and especially when you were chairman, getting the IDC committee back, back to, I guess, having a focus, and, and they're definitely seem to be moving in that direction. I mean, I'll turn it, I'll turn it over to you, just because I want to make sure I give the proper credit, that this is something, when I first got on the board, you were certainly encouraging folks, you got new members aboard, and I think they're, they're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's consistent, don't, your support has been enormously helpful in getting this moving, when we look at what the, what the committee's charted to do, and improving the health, well-being, quality of life of the residents is part of what this committee is off looking at. And to that end, there's a scope of services that, that frankly looks at what other communities are doing, where their successes are, and developing, analyzing that information, and providing analysis and reports back to the IDC. I think it'll help, I think it'll help this board, I think it'll help the FinCom. When we talk about prioritizing and focusing on quality of life, it's not always, you know, new buildings, it's not always, you know, some of the things we've been focused on in the past, but, you know, we've all heard it. It's about what our main street looks like, it's about what our perception of our community is, and this goes towards it. This isn't the end-all, be-all, but it's a direction that frankly is very consistent with the charter that you set out, Mr. Chairman, in terms of improving the quality of life for residents of Milford. This is a small piece towards that.
Thank you, Bill.
And I would agree, Mr. Chairman, with, with you, I think that, you know, Bill being the senior member and being the driving force behind this, that if, you know, Bill feels that strongly about it, then I would vote as well, I'd second it.
All right, I will also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Rick, we, do we sign that agreement?
You could sign as chairman, it's by us.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was just.
Yeah, okay.
As a sponsor for that article.
You know what, Rick, I will do it now, that way I don't.
Okay, sure.
Well, you probably won't forget, but I might, so.
You wanna sign these two?
At least we can fill in the rest.
That's right.
You're just personally signing for a million five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the geriatric refunding bond. We received a memo and backup information request from the town treasurer on behalf of the Geriatric Authority to, they're looking to refinance the original bond, which had a rate between four percent and five point one two five percent, which netted out to four point two eight, to the new lower rates between two percent and three point three seven five percent for a net rate of three point one six. This will bring a savings of one, of over one point seven million dollars over the course of the debt. We've done this before, I think this is, you know, something that's in the best interest of both the Geriatric Authority as well as the town of Milford.
And, Mr. Chairman, just kudos to our treasurer, Chris Pillar, our financial department, and led by Zach, and their work with the FinCom, and Chris and his team, to always look at ways to reduce our costs. And whenever you can refinance to a lower rate and save the community and the taxpayers money, it just makes sense, and I just congratulate them, and would make a motion to support.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, very specific motions.
Very specific language.
Yeah, we have it right here.
Yeah, you don't have to read all the rates and things, just up to where it says, as listed below, so.
All right.
Sorry.
No, 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 you, you have specific requirements, and I appreciate the town administrator keeping us in line, making sure we meet those requirements. So in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue rebonding funds at one time, or time, let me say this right, at one time, or from time to time pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund portions of the town's general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2006 dated December fifteen, 2006, maturing on December fifteen in the years 2018, 2019, 2024, 2026, 2046. And that the proceeds of any refunded bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay principal redemption premium on the interest in refunded bonds at the cost of issuance, refunded bonds, refunding the bond. Is that what you needed, Rick?
That's one, and then the second one, I need the rest of the language.
All right, so I'm gonna take a breath, and I'll make that motion as one. I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor.
It's gonna be a test after. And then further voted that the sale of the six million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollar general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated October twenty-fifth, 2017, to the Robert W. Baird Company, Inc., at the price of six million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight dollars and ninety-two cents in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved, and, you have the rest of that?
Nope. No problem.
And confirmed, the bonds shall be payable December fifteenth of the years in the principal amounts and bear interest in respective rates as listed below, and I just refer to the memo that was provided to us by the town treasurer. That's a motion.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, interrupt again, we just had that one ad on, the Boy Scouts.
Oh, that's right.
It's time-sensitive, so I was hoping.
Absolutely, no, and this is something we want to support.
Be okay to go forward with it.
Dear Milford Selectmen, I represent the scouting organizations of Milford as this year's scouting for food drive coordinator. I'd like to request your permission to use the municipal parking lot next to the Milford Food Pantry on Saturday, November fourth, from eleven A.M. until five P.M. to conduct our annual scouting for food drive. As has been done in the past, I would like to arrange to put up some signs around town about a week prior to the November fourth donation collection time, they will be removed by the end of the day on the fourth. Mayor of the Explorer Post twenty-nine has been made aware of the anticipated date to help us out with traffic control, as they have done in the past. And that is from Dale Winkler, Cub Master, PAC Four, and the coordinator for scouting for food. And the Tom LaFlin, Chief of Police, have approved with no issues or concerns.
Yeah, just another great thing done by the scouts, to help those that are less fortunate, and we appreciate that. I'd be happy to make a motion to support that, and I would second that as well, it's a great organization.
I'll also vote in favor, and we can, and I'll make that unanimous. I'm sorry, any other new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, moving on to correspondence, we have the police chief's annual license establishments activity report from January one through September thirtieth. A lot of this is information that, that we've seen with, again, the updated quarter included. I don't know if there's anything specific that either of you would like to discuss?
No, most of it we've seen, Mr. Chairman, there, there are some things that were as new information. I think it's great that we get the activity report to see what's happening. And frankly, you know, it just keeps adding on for McDonald's in large part.
Yep.
But I think we're doing the right thing. But I think we're doing the right thing and working with the management and having the Police Department work in cooperation with those to report any and all. So it's a, it's a balancing act between the amount of activity that's happening at those establishments and their early reporting.
And I would agree with that. I think it's, it's a great report, and I think it's something that we need to look at. And, you know, to Bill's point, we need to let those businesses that have a little bit of a lengthy list here know that, you know, we're, we're aware of it and we're watching it.
No, we are very much paying attention to it, and what I think the, another positive side of it is, it's, all of these business owners and these license holders have been encouraged to call the Police Department.
Right.
Not with the fear of retribution or, or some type of discipline other than we want to know what's going on and we're, we want to help, and the Police Department wants to help as well.
I agree.
Next, under correspondence, is a letter of resignation from Mary Carlson. Dear Will, it is with mixed emotions that I write this letter. I have lived in the Town of Milford for 40 years and have been a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for almost 10 years. I am moving to Worcester to be closer to my daughters and four grandchildren. Therefore, I will be resigning from the Zoning Board of Appeals effective 11, October 11, 2017. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing me to this board. I've enjoyed serving on the board and working with its members. Thank you sincerely, Mary E. Carlson. And she did copy Dave Consiglio, the Chairman of the ZBA. And I just, on a very personal level, Mary and Roy have been very close friends of mine for many, many years, and I just want to thank her for her service. She's a retiree at the Town of Milford, and she served on the zoning board for many years. So I just wanted to acknowledge Mary's service.
Yeah, as she noted in her letter, the first, first sentence was with mixed emotions. It's with mixed emotions that I accept the resignation. You know, who can blame a grandmother who wants to be closer to the grandchildren? But at the same time, she was well-balanced, thoughtful in her approach to zoning requests and zoning appeals requests, and, you know, I thank her for her service, and I know a letter will be going to her from the board.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
What I'd like to say is that, you know, you hear a lot of, a lot of times around the Town of Milford, you know, people that were born and brought up here and educated here, and they come back to the community and they give so much back to the community. Mary's a person that wasn't from Milford, but raised her children here and gave back so much to the community, not only as Stacy Middle School, but again, on the Zoning Board of Appeals. She, she was a tireless worker and she cared about the Town of Milford. And you know what? She will be missed. She will be missed. And so I just want to personally say thank you to her for her years of service to this community, because it's people like her, like us, like all of us here tonight that make a difference, that make this community what it is. So Mary, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I guess, how would the board like to proceed? Do we want to put it on the agenda item for the next meeting and get the, those folks that are interested in being ZBA members? I know we have alternates now, so they should be okay over the next couple of weeks. This isn't extremely time-sensitive, right? But I know it's an important board, and we want to make sure that we, we, we fill that seat. We also got, I also received a thank you card in true Dino nature, a handwritten note that said, "Dear Will, Bill, and Mike, thank you for your support and vote as a member of the Council on Aging. I will do my very best to represent you," and I know none of us here are worried about that, and Dino continues to serve in so many other capacities. So thank you, Dino, for the thank you card. That's something that you don't see very often.
No.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of thank you cards, and it's just quintessential Dino, so.
We know he'll do a great job.
No doubt.
Yeah. Probably help Bill and I out.
Yeah.
Sorry, Bill, I had to just say that.
Another old person comment.
Any other correspondence? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have one, one piece of correspondence that I wanted to make note of. So interesting letter I received relative to Governor's Appointment. Recently, resident of Milford, Mr. Harold Rhodes, was appointed by the Honorable Governor Charles Baker to the State's Architectural Access Board. I just wanted to make note of that and to congratulate Mr. Rhodes on that. While it may limit some of his involvement in future boards and committees, while he dedicates his time to this and meets the obligations of the Architectural Access Board, I just want to say there aren't, it isn't often that we have Milford residents that we should call out who are Governor's Appointments to important boards that will help this community in the future. So I just wanted to make note of that.
All right, no, and congratulations, Harold. He's a huge advocate for those with disabilities, and that is the board at the state level